Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. Before we start, just a few housekeeping arrangements. Can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present, and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Okay. Can I ask that members and officers in attendance introduce themselves? I'm councillor Rees-Millson, Chair of this committee.
I'm councillor Laura McLean, councillor of Ward.
Councillor Talib Hassan, Ben Gibber.
Councillor Sophie Thornton, Chief of Greenall.
Councillor Steve Ares, I'm Grace Parkward, councillor, Deputy Chair of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee.
Councillor Anne Whitaker, West Ecklesfield Ward.
Lucy Davies, Chief Officer of Healthwatch Sheffield.
Councillor Malacai Hayby for BSV. That's from Hill and Shireville.
Joanne Cooper, Democratic Services.
Deborah Glenn, Policy Officer, supporting this committee.
Thank you, everyone. And just mentioning that councillor Hayby is substituting today for councillor Phipps. And we have had apologies from councillor Abdul Sam Mohammed, councillor Martin Phipps, and councillor Andrew Argentia. Are there any items for exclusion of the public or press? Nothing today? And any declarations of interest, if any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? Councillor Hussain?
Item seven. I'm a registered patient, one of GP surgeries. The items and discussion.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. All right, on to item four, which is minutes of the previous meeting, which begin on page 11 of your agenda pack, were asked to approve as a correct record minutes of the last meeting held on the first of June, members who were present at that meeting. Any comments on the minutes? Are we happy to approve those as a correct record of the meeting? Thank you. Looking down that end. Councillor Ares? Are you happy to approve the minutes? Thank you. Okay. All right. Do we have any public questions and petitions?
Thanks, Chair. We've got a question from councillor Jane Dunn with regard to the first item on the agenda. And she would like to know how we will ensure that those have highlighted barriers in accessing the proposed hub will be given the same care as someone who can walk, cycle or drive there. So many people in Southey Ward have expressed concerns that if they couldn't get a bus or afford a taxi, how could they get to an appointment if needed in an emergency?
Thanks, Deborah. I think that obviously relates to the new build GP hub planned for Wordsworth Avenue, I think. So we'll refer back to that question while we're dealing with that item. Are there any members' questions? This is a new item on the agenda and will be standing item. We now have the facility for members to ask questions to the Chair at committee on any items that are not on the agenda for the meeting. Hopefully, you've all been informed about that process. Do we have any questions today, Deborah? Okay, thank you. So, straight on to item seven. And just checking the time, we should have plenty of time for this item, as we've only got two substantial items on the agenda today. So hopefully, we're not going to be hurrying everybody along all the time. So the primary care transformation update, this is, there's been a lot of work already through this committee, looking at plans to develop new build health centres in the north of Sheffield. And a lot of that work was completed at the end of last year and is now underway, progressing and stands. We're really keen to hear an update on how that's all moving on. And then we've got a new site identified for a fourth hub in the city centre. So that's new to us and obviously very keen to hear about that as well. So can I ask those who have come along to present and answer questions today to introduce yourselves, please?
Thank you. I'm Madegale Tebs. I'm Deputy Director of Primary Care Contracting Digital Estates in Sheffield Place at South Yorkshire ICB.
Hi, I'm Richard Kennedy. I'm Head of Involvement at South Yorkshire ICB.
And I'm Mike Speakman. I'm the Programme Manager for the Sheffield Primary Care Schemes.
Thank you all for coming. So if we can hear your update, and then I'm sure people have got questions, but as is unusual, I'm not going to keep hurrying you along. So please give us all the information that you've brought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So as you outlined in your introduction, Chair, the purpose for bringing the paper today is twofold. The first part is to give an update on progress with the three new build hubs that are under development in the north of the city. And in particular, we wanted to take the opportunity to report back to the committee on a number of the issues we have discussed before and the commitments we've given to provide the committee with assurance that we are actively engaging on those and delivering those assurances. And the second part is to inform the committee about the progress on the plans to develop a hub, a city centre, health centre. As you'll recall, we provided you with the information about the intent, the plans at previous meetings. But fortunately, we've been able to make some substantial process and progress in the last few months. So the purpose of the second part is to give you an update on the consultation and engagement work we're doing around that development and some of the forward planning on that. So I'm going to hand over first to Mike Speakman, who's going to give an update on the hubs in the north of the city.
Thank you, Abby. I will take the paper as read, so I won't go through it in detail, but just, a lot of echo, does make, okay. Just to give a bit of context, the decision-making business case that we considered at committee at the end of last year determined that Sappall One hub, which was proposed, we built at Concorde, was not to proceed, and that we were to proceed with Foundry One at Spittle Street, Foundry Two, Rushton Street, and Sappall Two, Wordsworth Avenue. So that is set out as a paper. They are the schemes that we have been working on. Upon completion of the decision-making business case and approval by Sheffield City Council, the council became a strategic development partner to those schemes. That was confirmed. The decision-making business case was also approved by NHS England. And we have confirmed in February of this year to all of the patients of those practices the decisions that were made around those schemes. So what we've been doing since then is working through the design and development from what is called stage two through to stage three. And that's working very closely and very intensely with the practices on what it is that they precisely require and the layouts and how those buildings would work. And then we have to align that to a cost plan. That enabled an outline business case to be submitted both to the council for inclusion in its capital programme, this is not letting any contracts yet, and also to NHS England, again, to reaffirm the continuation of the schemes. So as I say, the consultation that took place last year has been recognised as a very strong example, a very good example, and nationally is getting some attention and a credit to Richard and the team that led on that. So that has been shared as a good example. We are continuing the involvement activity. And again, that's delivering on what we said we would do in the decision-making business plans, and continue to involve people where appropriate and particularly people that have additional needs, and on the implementation of this and for the transition. So as the paper says, designing of the buildings with disability stakeholder groups, how the buildings become part of a community resource. We're looking at helping people with travel, assisting people that may have additional needs in getting to a hub, as change of location. Also addressing safety, security around the buildings, environmental aspect and design opportunities, and also preparing for that transition. We are a way off. We're looking, as the paper sets out, the timeframe for transition phase in January 25, March 25. So we are a little way off, and that is an active part of the plan to go through. I think one of the points to note is that while we have to agree, outline proposals and submit planning application, and planning applications are in now and under consideration. We've got planning offices yesterday to go through some points. They haven't been determined as yet. And equally, no final decision has been made that these will happen for sure, because business cases need to be approved, the practices need to confirm that they're entering into the agreement, as I say. So still some hurdles to go, these are not certainty. But the design has progressed well. We're out to tender, so we have got stage four design. And that's really where there's a very significant opportunity for involvement, because once we go through, we get confirmation that we're within the affordability of the programme, then we do the detailed stage four design with the appointed contractor, and that's where there's the real opportunities, the detail, the finishes, the wayfinding, the internal design is really important. And that's where we see a major opportunity for engagement with people that have got additional needs. But also, I mean, we're using a very experienced, professional team for another purpose. I had to give an update, and there's around about 24 disciplines involved in each of these hubs. And there's a lot of commonality between them, and they are very experienced in delivering healthcare facilities to a very high standard. And the expectations of healthcare have moved on, and we are working to the health building notes, health technical guidance, and all of the best practice and building regulations, and aiming for net zero carbon on these buildings. So there's a lot of work. Continuing that, we do have some roadshows underway at the moment. We were at one last night in Fervale. Today, we're in Burngrieve. And then next week, we're in Zappa to present an update and show people the plans. We had some really good feedback about the buildings. Of course, we are still hearing some of the concerns about, is it going to happen? And how am I going to get here? But actually, some of the work we did with planning officers and the transport highways team is actually highlighting some of the requests for additional bus stops, so starting to evolve into those. Real-time bus information. And then also, we'll be engaging, as we said we would, with South Yorkshire Passenger Transport about, once we've got this confirmed and we have certainty, around which bus routes, for example, can be diverted, to pick up that, because we have a shared aim. We want buses to come to our health centres, and actually, South Yorkshire Passenger Transport want to serve places where people are going. So there's a lot to be gained. We've talked through a lot of the implications of traffic and congestion and the impact on communities. And actually, we genuinely have come to a conclusion that there is a very minimal impact. A lot of the activity happens now, and some of the improvements, some of the facilities that we're providing will make improvements in that. One of the questions that we set to example is, are we still delivering on the objectives that we set out in the decision-making business case? And the short answer to that is yes. I think we've got more work to do, and we'll continue to remain focused on that. But we've got no material adjustments on the benefits that we expected to be delivered by the schemes at decision-making business case, and they've been reaffirmed through the outline business case, and we need to continue that into the final business case. And in fact, as a South Yorkshire ICB programme, we had a benefits workshop on Tuesday, which was really insightful in just making sure that we, a focus on what are the outcomes that we need, particularly for reducing health inequalities, improving access and delivering better primary healthcare in areas of deprivation in particular. Abby, Richard, any points that you wish to...
No, I don't think so.
If I pause there for any questions, it's probably appropriate before we consider anything to do with that city centre hub, is that okay?
That's excellent. Thank you ever so much, Mike. I've got councillor Hussain and then councillor Ares.
Thank you, Chair. Good to see that report. But I'm a bit disappointed, because, you know, the engagement you mentioned, we'd never been informed as elected member through that process, what first advertised, you're gonna invite us with our MP, that's never happened. And now you said in that document on page 26, this is the best practice and example for the nationally and just England, the case study. I'm really disappointed. If it's that's gonna happen nationwide, I'm sorry to say, this is not right. If you recall, the meetings in Burngrieve, but it was down Fairwell Hope, up Warden Street, in both occasions, they were quite heated, meetings, and only few people were up. And down Fairwell Hope, only the people who were partner of the GP surgeries, they were up for the new Foundry, Foundry Two. And Warden Street, the Pismo surgery, I think that's why they withdrew from the GP hub surgeries, because of the people's feeling. I don't know what to say, but people said it's predetermined decision, and it's gonna go ahead, and it went hard. And if that's the case study, and it's prime example for the nationally, I don't know what to say. This is not right. Something's wrong somewhere. I mean, I welcome the 37 million investment, but that investment is, in a way, is caught in services. People demanded the time of appointment, and which you mentioned, we can't guarantee, because this is the building, it's not the doctor's appointment, what people demand now and in future. Doctors in those surgeries are gonna be same numbers, and doctors' retention in those surgeries is not enough. That's, I believe, and you had those questions and answered those questions in the community. And lastly, I would say, the programme was gonna start in this September, and it's delayed again, and it's now, it's gonna start next year in January. And building material cost has gone up, it's doubled. Do you really think that 37 million is gonna be enough for four hubs? Thank you.
Thank you for the questions, councillor, I understand. I'll just pause on the consultation. I'll bring Richard in shortly, just around the consultation and the example of that. But we did go through a very comprehensive process, probably more detailed than anyone has been through before in reaching these decisions. And we absolutely understand that the decision isn't the choice of everybody, but on reflection, it was for the majority. And I have to disagree with perhaps the feedback we took away from some of the meetings. Yes, there were concerns and things that people wanted to be addressed, but by the time we worked through those processes, I would genuinely believe, I play this completely straight, but I've got no axe to grind, people are saying, yeah, we do want this. We think it's a good idea. Overall, there's lots of things I don't like, and I'd rather, you know, be in a different place or whatever. But on the whole, people did support it, and that was the finding of the consultation process that we respected. Where it wasn't supported was for Sappall One at Concorde, and we listened to that, and we are not proceeding with that scheme. So we, you know, I think we've evidence that we do listen, and the consultation process has been through a very rigorous process, more than any other I've come across. Couple of points, you're just picking up, and sorry if they're not in the order that you raised them, just around retention. This is a really important part for practices. We know that our practices and the general model for GP provision at the moment, the partnership model is really struggling in some places, particularly where there's low property values. And that is because to become a partner, you need to buy into the equity of that building, and particularly more recently with interest rates rising. That often means a partner joining and buying a retiring partner's share of that building out for £200,000, £300,000. And what we hear from new GPs is they don't want to become partners, because they don't want to take on that borrowing. It's a real difficulty. Also, making sure you've got attractive, suitable workplaces for people to come and work and feel valued in those practices is really important, and that's a very, very clear aim. The ability to train our new, not just GPs, but other practitioners as well, is delivered through the hub. People just haven't got the space to be able to deliver. And in fact, what they're saying in practices, as I've been this week, is it's not just they haven't got the space for the trainees, they would have another trainer, but you need more space for the trainer and then the trainees. So we are providing additional space, and that's really important for the recruitment and then the retention of the skilled workforce in particular. And there is a very strong evidence that people that train in a practice will come back and work in the practice, because they feel part of that team, if they're valued. And that's a really important part. You mentioned appointments, and that's what people want, is appointments. Absolutely, we want that. But what we do know is one of the main restrictions, that most of our practices, not all, but we've only got one exception, all of our practices say we haven't got room to deliver the services that we could deliver. It's not that they haven't got the funding to recruit new additional roles necessarily, because every year, there is unused funds for some of the PCN roles and for some of the ARS roles, additional roles. But they haven't got anywhere for those people to work. And people that they have recruited haven't got space, they have to work from home and doing it remotely, and what people want is face-to-face appointments. So we are providing a very significant investment, fully funded, into shared bookable space for a lot of those additional roles to be delivered. And the practices have been very heavily involved in determining what space they need to deliver their services. So I'm not saying that these buildings will solve everything, because there's three aspects. There's, you need the qualified staff you need to be able to recruit, which I think I've touched on while I covered recruitment and retention at first. You need the facilities for those people to work, which we are providing, and you need the funding to be able to employ them. Those are the three aspects that you need to be able to deliver more care within general practice. We're not solving all of them, but this is a significant part in all three of those, because we have given an undertaking that any savings that we make will be reinvested in this network in reducing health inequalities. You mentioned the programme. Yes, we have got some slippage. We are still working to the same end date. We have had to work very hard. We've had some unexpected issues. One of those you've touched on is cost. We have had to work very hard on managing costs. One of the implications of Sappall One being stood down is through the South Yorkshire ICB Programme Board, we have reallocated the funding that was going to be used for Sappall One to cover the increased costs of the other three hubs, or the four hubs, I should say, not just, and also some other parts of South Yorkshire. So there has been a review of the programme through the Programme Board, and that does mean that we've had to make some increases. But where we are at the moment, we have a very experienced, an expert team of cost advisers who work very closely. We've got better design. Part of the problem, no, opportunity actually, is the buildings, following the work with practices, the buildings are larger than we originally anticipated, which is part of that cost pressure. The sites that we are working with are not the sites we would have chosen in an ideal world for building, they're quite challenging sites. That has got cost, and we've had to work that through. So the structures and the foundations for two of those sites are more extensive than originally anticipated. There are risks associated with some of those sites, and the ground levels and the extent of groundwork that we need to do are greater. So there are some cost pressures, but as you say, inflationary cost pressures, we knew about those earlier in early last year. And yes, they've exceeded where we thought they were going to be. We worked very hard on those as well. We are out to tender now, but we have very good market intelligence from other schemes and also with our expert team, cost advisers. But the budgets we have now are aligned to where we expect tenders to come back and the outturn cost of schemes. Right, I'll pause there, Abby, if you wanted to come in.
Yes, thanks, Mike. I just wanted to, I think, bring Richard in actually on the consultation and the engagement and public involvement we've done, and how we listen to that, because it has been very comprehensive. And we have reported to this committee and, you know, engaged with this committee on a number of occasions around the report, the consultation report, and the decision-making business case in December, when the decision was made to proceed with these developments. So, Richard, if there's anything additional you'd like to say about the consultation and engagement process?
Yeah, I think, I think the main, addressing your questions there, I think the main points that I'd want to kind of get across is that the, I mean, all the feedback that we received was really important as part of the consultation process for us to understand the impact that it would have on all of our communities. But I think it's very easy to hone in on the specific activities. And certainly from public meetings, it has a limited sample size, a limited sort of representative sample of people that are there, you know, fully valid, and we welcome the conversations that we had there. I think we had really positive conversations with people about really understanding what people were concerned and worried about. But equally, we need to recognise that we put a lot of work into a lot of other activities as well, to ensure that we had a sample size that was representative of all of the local areas and the patients within all of those practices, so we could really understand, we could really understand everybody's perspective on where that came from. And as Mike said, I think the main, one of the main things to take away is the fact that Sappall One, one of the proposals put ahead was, you know, was quite stark in the feedback that we got back compared to all the other three, in that they were unmitigatable, I think, was the point, that the issues that were raised were ones that we couldn't address, we couldn't find solutions for, and therefore, that was why, that was why that was chosen not to go ahead, because it's, because we'd heard back from what the local community said about that, and we, you know, we didn't have answers to it, we didn't feel that it would deliver on the objectives of what we wanted to achieve. So that's the first thing that I wanted to say. And the other one is just, you know, the purpose of consultation isn't about a kind of referendum of, we want this or we don't want this. It's about understanding actually what are the impacts and how together we can potentially overcome those or not overcome those. And referring back to the Sappall One, one again, that was exactly that. It wasn't, you know, strictly that kind of more people said that they wanted it than didn't want it, it was because the issues that were raised couldn't be overcome in terms of delivering that project and still delivering the benefits that we knew that the other areas would be able to.
Can I just feed in one extra point, sorry, just in terms of the consultation and the, your point around, you know, nationally recognised. This is not us saying this, we're not marking our own homework or patting ourselves on the back here. These are national bodies, NHS England, the Consultation Institute, who are, have a much broader perspective and experience. These are their specialist fields and they're experts in, are saying to us, well done, that's really good. Can we share this case study? So it's not us that's saying it, that's them that are saying that to us. So it's not us that's saying it, that's that's them that are saying that to us.
And I think just to pick up on your point around access and and services and how this funding could be used. And I think we've been very clear from the beginning of this process that this is this is national capital funding. We have no opportunity to use this to pay for services. We have a choice. We can either progress with improving primary care estate in Sheffield or the money returns to the Treasury. So it's not that we are choosing to develop these health centres rather than using this funding for for other means. And as Mike said, these developments in and of themselves won't solve or or won't 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 directly solve some of the issues that you describe. You know, some of the 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 difficulties patients report experiencing in terms of accessing their GP practice or or accessing the the clinicians that they that they would like to see at the time they would like to see them. But it is a really important enabler. Mike very eloquently explained that we have, you know, significant numbers of additional role staff who are becoming part of practice and part of networks through the current GP contract settlement. There are, this year alone, there will be, there's potential for up to ninety one additional staff through those arrangements in Sheffield. But one of the factors that really limits, the two factors that really limit networks' abilities to have those staff in place. One is being able to recruit appropriately trained staff, the ones they identify that they need. And that comes down to training as much as anything else. And Mike, you know, you've explained how how capacity affects training. But also having the physical space to accommodate those staff. And those are two really important points for the networks. And in particular, the networks, the the practices that we're trying to focus on in the North City. Those practices were and networks were identified for a reason, that their that their pre, their existing premises are very old. It's it's hard to, it's hard to imagine, it it would be impossible to redesign those premises or alter those premises in a way that would that would allow for the flexibility that practices, that the NHS services need. You know, the 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 health centres, when they are built, will have a significant amount of what we're calling bookable space in them. That space that can be used by any service who needs to access it, which gives you the flexibility to bring IEP teams in, community nursing teams. It gives us additional flexibility in terms of, in terms of services and staff working together, you know, to support support the needs of the of the patients in that area that we simply don't have with the current practice configuration. And in terms of access, the estates work is one of a number of 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 programmes of work that are happening. You may not be aware, but there is a significant programme of work that NHS England is is directing this year through the the Plan for Recovering Access to Primary Care, which we are supporting and working with our practices and our networks to deliver this year. And that is focused on on ways that we can improve the, we can improve patients' access to primary care, particularly those first contacts. So when a patient decides they need to see somebody, how easy is it for them to contact the practice? How easy is it for them to get a response? How easy is it for them to come away with with what they actually need from that, from that experience? And that includes not just increasing capacity, it's around addressing telephony issues. It's around better methods of of triage and support. So you can make sure that patients get the right advice or the right contact the first the first time, come away with knowing, knowing what they need to do. So those pieces of work are happening in tandem. It's not either or.
I'm going to move on, so if we've got time to come back, Talib, if that's okay. Is that, unless it's like ten seconds? We'll come, so, really, really quick.
Yeah, one about consultation now, you haven't informed the last last night and today's meeting. Not not the local member, have you? No, we haven't received any communication. We we don't know. So and and in in Ben, the literacy, you know what the rate of literacy is and especially IT literacy. So how on earth is somebody going to say this is the consultation and how the community is informed?
I think, I think, yeah, we'll we'll take Talib's points and move on if that's all right, councillor Harris.
Could you clarify a question? Are we taking questions on both part A and part B of the, both together?
Well, my question. Not not the city hub yet, if you don't mind, because they've still got to present on that.
So just the other three?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'm I'm.
Just on the North Sheffield new builds at the moment, if that's all right.
Yeah, yeah, that 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 those were what my, but very quickly. I mean, I'm conscious that the one or two new members of the scrutiny committee might. I just wondered whether it might be useful to just very briefly just explain the funding, how how the project is funded. And the 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 other question is on, you you seem reassured that the milestones are, you know, are achievable. I'm just wondering what sort of risk analysis has been done on what might, you know, sort of come off field that might prejudice the funding for the project? If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you, just for members of the committee, just a bit of background as councillor asks. This originally came from two thousand and eighteen when practices or CCGs, as they were then, submitted funding as part of what was called Wave Four B, very technical name, which was largely around new hospitals. And South Yorkshire put bids in for primary care. And we were the only people in the nationally that that did that. And in two thousand and nineteen, as it it popped up, and we were told that that had been approved. That's a very outline case and obviously sometime obviously pre Covid. And so the budgets were set and there was a timeframe that that was set. But it was very clear this was national capital. It doesn't take anything away from any other schemes that were being delivered locally by trusts or by the by the CCG. It was purely additional capital to make an investment in to the the hubs that we were we're looking to to create. And the the scheme was different at that point. It had been developed previously, the the initial bid had been developed with practices over some time. And that actually came from a view of the Lift Programme. You know, we've got the Lift Buildings in Sheffield. That had ceased and they said, we still need a solution to our building's problem. We have got aging buildings and not fit for purpose. How do we take that forward? So that's where the where the bid came from, as a as a follow on from Lift. Now, I'm not saying that that what we're delivering now is exactly the same, the same outcomes of new hubs and bringing practices together. I would argue potentially that practices thought they were going to own the buildings and these are going to be in public ownership. So the funding was conditional from the Department of Health and Social Security. Care, sorry. That it was to create new publicly owned buildings for 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 those purposes. And we were given the budgets and the timeframe, so we've we've worked on that going through. Obviously, we have had changes we go through, we've had cost increases. We were able to secure, when we realised we'd got cost pressures and time pressures on what had originally been set down. We did go back and ask for more money and more time. We were given more time. So we've had to work and and do value engineering on that. But that's that's clear, we we are creating new publicly owned buildings, which is quite different. And that's why I genuinely believe this is a good news story and and absolutely right for committee members to hold this to account and 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 ask questions about how we're delivering and what we're delivering. But this is an inward investment of NHS funds into Sheffield that is not happening anywhere else. And I think the buildings that we will provide will be better than anywhere else that that we have. And they are public owned, probably the standard of the Lift Building, but publicly owned and not with the the burden of of ownership cost. Sorry, yeah, the risks of of milestones was the second point to your question and things that might happen that that trip us up. If, for example, there was something came back on planning that we we didn't achieve planning, we had to do some redesign. That might affect the timescale. I think that would be a discussion we would have to have. If tenders come back above budget, again, I think that's a discussion that has been held at South Yorkshire ICB Programme Board around options. I don't want to speculate on on what those might be, but, you know, we we, in the current climate, we've been told very clearly and it's been made clear that's the budget you live you live within it. So we deliver the best we possibly can within that budget, within the within the programme constraints.
But in terms of the governance process for this, Mike, there's a very clear governance process that we that we sit within, within Sheffield and South Yorkshire. And then in terms of reporting to NHS England and the Treasury as well. And we've got regular checkpoint reviews as part of that process to determine whether we're on course or whether there's any new risk emerging.
We have to account for delivery.
Okay, thank you. Was there a question on, was there a question on while we're talking about the final for the funding? Sorry, Mel, I'll just take those question first because she had a question about funding that kind of follows on from there.
My question can wait till part B's done as well.
It's city?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, sorry. I'm a new member, so I'm getting up to speed on sort of the detail of this. I was looking at the document that I think got sent separately to the report about the capital approvals. And obviously, there's been the thirty seven million that's been allocated. And then I was looking on the second page of the table and the estimated total value being thirty million. I'm just wondering why those two figures are different and how that works, if that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the thirty seven million is is a is a high level figure for a number of schemes that that were work with Sheffield shares. So it's fifty seven million for South Yorkshire, of which thirty seven million was for Sheffield. As I explained, there has been some adjustments with Sapa One hub being stood down. We needed some of that funding that would have been spent on that to support the the remaining four hubs that were three new builds that were approved by the consultation to proceed and the city hub that we'll consider shortly. There are other works that that are scheduled within Sheffield, both improvements to existing practices to create additional capacity and also some reconfiguration of the the Lift and Property Services buildings that we have, where we think we can get better use out of existing floor space. So, you know, where we have large meeting rooms we don't need anymore, how do we divide that up and make it patient facing accommodation? So there's some budget within within that as well. And also, what has changed is is a part of the structure from the outcome of the the hubs is works that are due to be undertaken at three particular surgeries that decided not to become part of a hub, but still have got pressures. So that's Norwood Surgery, Pittsmore Surgery and Firth Park Surgery. They are additional schemes, not included within the thirty million that is the cost for the hubs, if that helps. So, okay. So I think you might be referring to Appendix Two that was at the Finance Committee on the first of August. And that was for the the approval to for these to enter into the South, the Sheffield City Council Capital Programme. But it is using the NHS funding that will flow through. That hasn't flowed yet because business cases haven't been approved, but that's the indication. So it's one point six, one point seven million pounds of development cost to date that is in the programme. And then if we get the tenders back and we award contracts, then those costs for construction would be would be fed in. So there is a slight reduction from the thirty seven for pure Sheffield. As I said, there were some other cost pressures in the scheme. We did release some funding back to the Programme Board, that was gone through their their process. But there are additional schemes, not only the hubs.
Thank you.
Just to be absolutely clear on that, there's no, and you've hinted at that earlier, there's been, there's been no devaluation of the original ambitions of these new build hubs and and what's planned for the city centre. So although that that figure is now sitting at thirty million total scheme value estimated for those schemes, that's not, there's no there's no devaluing of what was originally set out in the outline business case.
No, not in terms of the the three hubs. Obviously, we're going through the process of what will achieve a city hub that I know we do to consider next. So that that is not that we've gone from thirty million to thirty seven million to thirty million. They are they are different because there are additional schemes. There's one point five million in the developing capacity. There's half a million in the the void and underutilised space reconfiguration. And I think it's in that two point four million of into the the other the other schemes as well. So, but in terms of the outputs, no. If if anything, we're probably delivering more because, as I said, the buildings have gone up. The practices said, actually, we could use another consulting room, some of the facilities that are being provided. And that's why the buildings have got a bit bigger. I think also a focus on accessibility has increased that. So particularly for Foundry Two, there has been some considerable cost in ensuring that we've got level access at street level on a very challenging site, I would add. But we've have have created a lower ground floor entrance with lifts that take people straight to reception. So that people don't have to walk up ramps or don't have to go up the hill and in in through the car park on a flat level. So it's things like that that I think we we had, we we knew we needed to create an accessible building when we've looked at the sites, we've had the development. We said, how do we maintain those those fundamentals of accessibility that we have for the vast majority of people that will arrive on on foot and maybe not able to to climb steps or or use ramps? How do we make this easy for for people to access? And we've incurred cost on that and we've had to 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 manage that.
It sounds like it's slightly fluid still, but I think what what might be really useful would be, obviously, the table we've got there in the Appendix Two that went to the Finance Committee is useful because there are there are estimated sums there. Some of the other things that you've just mentioned today are obviously that they're, that's kind of new to our ears. I think into, you know, I mean, when when thirty seven million pounds is announced to the general public, I think for for most people, the question is simply, what 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 do we get for our buck? And I think it might be really useful at this stage, if it's possible, to have some kind of breakdown of everything that you've just detailed there in a nice, simple format that that is, can be publicised. Because it's sort of becoming a bit, you know, it's sort of becoming a little bit misty how the money's being allocated. And I think, you know, that news of thirty seven million pounds is obviously, you know, is a really good news story for a lot of people. But how that's being spent then is is also of interest to patients.
I I'm very happy to to work with colleagues on on what we can put together as 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 simply as we can. There's a lot of complexity there and we need to avoid that complexity. If certainly if if committee members wished, we'd we'd happily do a briefing on on that. It's probably easier to do, it's quite technical stuff and some of it. And breaking the way that we we run projects, breaking some of that down into what's civils, what's enabling works and what's groundwork and M and E, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, et cetera, may not be helpful, the breakdown we have. But I think the information we've we've already developed and is is available for planning. The sort of design and access statement in particular really sets out what we're looking to do with those buildings. We're providing images, which were well received last night at the at the meeting. So perhaps working on that, if we if we take that away of how we can do a bit of a fact sheet for people about what where the money's going. But building projects are expensive.
I think there's probably a a couple of overarching points that's worth restating. The the first is that there are, that other than the fact that we have withdrawn the Sapa Hub of, you know, following the decision, with the decision following consultation. Everything that we described initially in terms of the the objectives, the aspirations of the programme remain part of the programme. Nothing else has been withdrawn. And I think the second thing in terms of the funding, it is very complex and that's but it partly because it's a it's a construction, it's a huge, it's a huge programme. And also, I suspect in terms of understanding it, partly because the process we are following, and I think this might be some of it, Mike, is is a Treasury seven case, business case process. And that asks you to follow a particular process in terms of building up your your business case to full business case and then to delivery beyond. And that focuses, the first thing that while everything is being built up, the 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 stages that you focus on first are the strategic outline is 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 working out what the need is. And and then obviously the engagement, the 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 development of of that case. And it's only towards the end of that process that you finally bring together. And it's only towards the end of that process that you finally bring together all the financial costings. And I'm describing this horribly, I think, as a layperson, Mike, but it means that you, that the sort of finality in terms of those financial costing comes at the end of a process. And the whole aim of that is to make sure that you have developed what you actually need. You understand what benefits you're trying to achieve and what the value for money is. And then you finalize the costings. Have I described that correctly, haven't I? Which is probably why it feels like it's not, it's not firm yet.
I've disagreed with you, Abby, that you're not a layperson in this. You are a better business case practitioner, so you do know what you're talking about, absolutely. The other point I just wanted to make is, as Abby was saying, there's lots of different parts, lots of moving parts that come together in this. It isn't just a designer building, tender it, planning permission, build it, we can move in. There's very many aspects to this. And one of the key ones is around the financial implications for practices and for the ICB and for the council in moving into this. The council have been really clear that they need a full cost recovery model. So this is not them putting council funds into these buildings, it is purely from the NHS. And we need to reconcile that against the funds that we pay for effectively rent of existing buildings that will be released that comes back into the running cost of the new building. So we're working really hard to get an optimum cost for the occupancy. But all of this comes together, even if we complete the planning permission, the tenders and we're in a position to award contracts, we can't do that until the practices say, yes, we are happy with that, that we're prepared to enter into those lease agreements for the next twenty five years. So, you know, the phrase I use is, nothing is agreed until everything is agreed. So we really do need to keep the focus on those different aspects, keeping them moving at the same time. And they're all interrelated. If we make a change to the building, it impacts the operating cost of the buildings. And the, some of that cost is reimbursed by the ICB to practices, but some is actually their practice and cost. We have given that undertaking, reiterated that the money that is released from our old buildings is remaining within the network, it is available. If we can get the best value out of operating those buildings and that produces a surplus, it will be reinvested in the network in reducing health inequalities.
Thanks. I think what I was getting at is less about specific cost breakdown because obviously at this stage that's impossible. But more about the shopping list of what you're trying to achieve. Because it seems to have grown to more things than just the original hubs that we talked about. So I think the public perception of probably at the moment is thirty seven million new hubs. Whereas actually you're talking about a lot more that you can do with the money. So I think that would be useful. But I'm not going to ask you to come back again on it because we've got other questions. So, councillor Thorpe.
Thank you. I just wanted to pick up on what you were saying around the bus routes and new stops and diversions. I suppose it's a question of access really, which all sounds very positive in the way you laid it out. And I'd hate for that work to be in vain in the kind of current context and climate of rounds of bus cuts. I think there are some, there is some significant anxiety as some regional funding in bus routes comes to an end at the end of October. And we could, and I'd hope not, that we face another round of cuts in November. Yesterday, some of my constituents came to full counsel and they've been missing important screening and checkup appointments because of cuts to their local bus route. Which obviously this has a knock on effect to primary care because people are missing appointments and often at short notice. And especially for those who can't afford a car or a taxi. So this might be a better question for transport colleagues. But I'm hoping for, with your work with them and I'm assuming therefore with route service providers as well, if you could provide some reassurance really, whether are those routes guaranteed to not be at risk going forward in your work with transport colleagues? And I'm assuming therefore thereby first stage COHTM, given the current context that we're currently in, really.
Thank you for the question, Gassett. Absolutely understand the concern and it was not the best timing that actually, I think it was pretty much in the day or two days before we launched our consultation on the hubs. The announced cuts to bus routes came out as well. Now, what we do know is that those changes to bus routes affect our existing practices, not just our proposed new hubs. And that was, I cover thirty two or thirty four was particularly a route that went past most of our practices. We did meet with the colleagues director level within South Yorkshire Passenger Transport, a very constructive meeting. And I have to say, I'm not getting into, I wouldn't want to be planning bus services, it's very complex and there's a lot of constraints there. We shared the same aim that they want to increase passengers, which means going to places where people want to go. And we want bus services to come to our health hubs and improve access. So, you know, we share the same goal. There was an undertaking there to continue to work once we have got confirmation of the schemes to say, how can we improve accessibility? And it's not just about whether a bus is on or not, it's about diverting other routes. And I think we've seen some of that and I heard of some of that last night from patients, from some of the practices. They're saying that there are routes that have been diverted and that they're helping with them. They may not be as frequently as they want, but they are serving the right locations. And we're having constructive conversations about where those bus stops would be to best pick up and drop off for the new hubs, given the routes that people have. We did receive feedback from Transport Highways colleagues yesterday in the meeting with planning officers, where they have requested a number of additional stops and live service information. So there is, you know, an intention there to make sure these buildings are well served. We will pick up the cost of those facilities, those improvements. They've normally been done under what's called a section one oh six agreement, but because it's a council owned building, it can't be as a technicality. We'll continue to work on that, but we haven't got the absolute detail. And I think it would be wrong to start putting any or asking for changes to bus routes until we have absolute certainty we're going to build. So that year of construction is when we really look to engage in that process and delivering of those, does that help?
Yeah, thank you. You were saying about us picking up the cost, I suppose, have you got an estimate on that?
They did provide costs. I won't quote them now because I might be wrong, but they did give us an indicated cost back through the planning officer colleagues. And they were, you know, we noted them as part of our additional programme costs that we'll need to absorb.
Thank you very much. Do you want to move on to hear about the city hub? Did you have a question still on this first part, Sam?
Certainly, very quickly. I mean, first of all, thank you for bringing the report to us and clearly there's been a lot of work put into it, so thank you for that. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for Sheffield and obviously it has to be right, doesn't it? So clearly that's what all the work's about. The roadshow that you had last night, was it very well attended?
It wasn't, unfortunately. I think we had eight or nine people there.
That's quite disappointing, really, isn't it?
It is, and I don't mean to sound complacent. What we have found is that if people have got something they want to say, they'll come and say it. If they're generally happy, they don't attend.
So you assume everybody answered the topic because they didn't turn up, yeah?
That could sound awfully complacent and we don't take that view. Practices send text messages out to patients on that list. We will continue to do more and provide information to practices, through practices for getting information to patients in a range of languages as well. So we would have liked to see, I think we, most of the twenty odd public consultation meetings that I attended and Richard Abbey also attended were pretty well attended. You know, we had thirty, forty, fifty people in some of them, others weren't. I think it's, you know, it's quite difficult to, you can get the message out there as best you can, it's whether people want to come. I think when people wanted to find out more about what the proposal is and have their voice on that, we had better attendance. I think some of the people that came out of interest, they weren't actually patients of any of the practices.
Thank you, thank you, that's all.
I think the other thing to add as well is that, I mean, the roadshows were only one part of the thing. We've shared, we've been very proactive in making sure that we shared the details of the planning application as soon as that went on to the portal with the community groups that we've worked very closely with throughout the whole process. So they had all of that information available should anybody approach them. And that was one of the things that the community organisations were very clear with us, that they wanted to be briefed about everything that was kind of coming up. So we've been very proactive in making sure that that's happened. So hopefully lots more information has gone out to local communities, above and beyond just the kind of roadshow opportunities as well.
We said at the time that the, at the consultation, that the planning application was almost a second consultation to gain views. Looking across the portal, the majority of those, there are very few comments from local residents and patients. Some are very supportive. I think there's a very small number of those that are saying, I don't like this. And it's actually for different reasons than where we're building the hub, but yeah.
If I could just comment on that, Richard particularly. I became aware of the planning applications just because I stumbled across it. I don't, I don't know whether you notified members, but just to note that that ward members particularly, and all, you know, I mean, there's a lot of wards where patients are attending these surgeries. And I don't think they were all notified that the planning applications had dropped in.
Absolutely, yeah. No, I think that's been an omission on our part. Apologies for that. Yeah, I think we were very focused on getting it out to communities and, yeah, sadly forgot at this point. But we'll make sure that all of that information gets sent through as well to all members.
So if we can move on to the news about the city hub, Mel, did you have a question?
Squeeze one question in quickly. This is in regards to the Burn Greek Surgery. One of, there's been a conversation with one of the GPs from Burn Greek Surgery and I just want to share their thoughts on the whole thing. So they believe the advantages outweigh the disadvantages and they'd like to be as green as possible. However, there's something which you mentioned about providing additional support in terms of retention and training. And I think this fits in perfectly, which is looking progressively about the roles of doctors. And they realize that the medical model of treating symptoms isn't enough. So because it's a new change, would it be possible to implement a progressive role of doctors or some sort of training within that? Just to add on to that, you mentioned you'd be meeting, is it South Yorkshire Passenger Services, Transport Links? So a suggestion for a bus. So as you know, the site of Spill Hill is quite far from where the nearest bus to Spill Hill is. Many people will be able to get there, that's fair, but the elderly or those with mobility problems won't be able to, it'll be difficult for them. There used to be a bus, the M twenty, I wrote the M twenty or M five, I can't remember which one that used to go up there. But it's no longer in action. Would that be possible to look into reinstating or having that conversation as a recommendation?
I'll let Abby pick up the point about roles and models of primary care. Very happy to feed in, as I said, we will be continuing conversations in South Yorkshire Passenger Transport. Now we have the sites confirmed and greater certainty of those. I think they would be equally key to look at what can be provided. I can't obviously say whether any buses will be reinstated, but we do want to work hard to try and make sure that passengers bus routes are able to serve the new facility. So I'll make a note of that particular request.
Most of the conversation of reinstating or looking at, rather than actually, but yeah, thank you.
Sorry, just a bit on travel. Sorry, we also had the question from councillor Dunn. Sorry, and I think partly that might refer back to much earlier on in this process. There was some talk around mitigations in the Equities Impact Assessment early on with the North Sheffield Hubs. There was mention of potentially using community transport, minibus style. I just wondered if that's still part of the picture.
What we said is we would look at that as part of, this is not just about the new hubs. That is an issue that faces patients of many practices. And what we shouldn't be doing is being differential to those that moved into the hub. So I think we have said we do need to look at the issue of those that are not able to get to their practice more broadly than just those patients or practices that are moving. We understand that might be an issue. We could said we'll do additional support in helping people understand the best way to get to their practice through practices. But I think the issue was one of those, we said this needs to be considered by primary care more broadly than just for those hubs.
I think, can you just take your mic off now? I think if we can hear about the city hub, and obviously we've had a report sent to us on that, so maybe keep it fairly succinct. And then we can ask our questions, thanks.
Yes, so I'll do a brief overview just because of new members. But back in two thousand and twenty two, we started our pre-engagement process for the hubs and that did include, that did include suggestions of a city centre hub. And we engaged with patients about that, unfortunately. At the time that the consultation on the four hubs in the north of the city came around, a suitable site couldn't be located within the city centre. Obviously, there are challenges with a city centre, identifying a city centre location. So that very much, that didn't form part of the consultation at all. Obviously, now we, lots and lots of work has gone on and Mike might be able to fill in a little bit more about that. Recently, a site was located that meets all the needs for that health, for the two practices that are still interested in moving into that one. So we started a consultation on, what was the date now? Twenty ninth of July, was it? So that's a full twelve week consultation. One of the, one of the things I think is worth noting is that our approach has been slightly different to the city centre consultation in that the impact is, we kind of noted, is significantly less in terms of the distance that between the current practices and the new one. And also the fact that it's, because it's going into an existing building that's already there, there's a very different sort of expectation around it, which is why we made the decision to to have a much more proportionate consultation on that change in line with a lot of the other estate changes that we've had over recent years in where we've had relocations of practices within a very short distance. So that's not to say that the scope of the consultation is drastically different. But I think in the approach specifically with this committee as well, it's why we're kind of coming to you now after the consultation has launched as an update and to understand that rather than perhaps being fully briefed prior to the consultation. So the consultation, like I say, it's still a twelve week consultation, the kind of recommended time that we have consultations. We're still working in very much the same way, partnering with community organisations. Shipshape is our, was our chosen community organisation that we're working very closely with to promote this. We've also, we've also made contacts and working alongside MERS as the provider of asylum accommodation across the city, as well as Spring and City of Sanctuary. And also Men Cap as well, who we're working with and have already provided us with an easy read version, which is in the appendices. So the approach has been very similar. We've communicated with patients in their preferred method, as we did with the consultations with the other one. That's predominantly either a text message if patients have said that they wanted to be contacted in that way, or it's in a letter. All of the materials have been translated into the top three languages as reported by the practice, which is Kurdish, Arabic and Farsi. And we're also in the process of arranging public meetings, which will be fully communicated with all patients as well. And we hope to have three or four of those available for patients to come and kind of have a more detailed chat around exactly what the proposals are and and what potential impacts that might occur. Like I say, we're not expecting the same level of impacts as we are for previously. And that's due to the, just the short distance that it is, but also the huge benefits that it has in terms of actually much better accessibility to public transport. I mean, the Mulby Street at the moment doesn't, is I mean, the Mulberry Street at the moment doesn't, i- i- it is pretty well served, but the, the new site is, is directly, um, it is directly adjacent to tram stops and, um, and bus stops, um, as well as being able to be walked in. I think, I think that's probably everything that I wanted to, um, to kind of say, other than that, again, you know, we've, um, we've gone through a thorough and quality impact assessment process to identify the, the needs of the, the patients that, um, of those two practices. Uh, we know that, um, although, uh, one of the practices is a, is a, 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 a practice for the general population. The, uh, the other practice is a, is, is very much a specialist, um, GP provision, uh, for asylum seekers and, and other more marginalised, marginalised communities in, in, um, in the city. But actually there's, there's a, a link as well that, that as patients, um, get different statuses, they, they move out from Mulberry but actually retain and, and move across to, um, to the, the, the city practice as well. So it, it, it does have a similar one. So in, in that, around, um, around those needs of the patients.
Thank you. Any questions, members? Councillor Hebe and then Lucy.
So these questions are around the consultation, transport again, well, the transport suggestion. I'm subbing for Martin, but on the face of it, I think this is a good thing for the city massively. And, um, I don't expect the consultation to be negative. I think it'll be positive. But in terms of location, it's, the location's okay. However, like I said previously, if you have limited mobility and say your bus goes down Rundle Gate, it's, it might be a bit of a chore getting just even around the corner. So a transport suggestion is linking the freebie maybe to everyone do gate if you can pass down. Of course, I'm not saying you guys can do that by clicking your fingers, but just to start the conversation. While I was speaking to Martin, we discussed the pre-consultation for city and how low level, level of engagement there was with the consultation. So I guess this is reassurance that engagement is higher this time. So the main question is, what is the response rate look like right now? That's the first one. I can keep going and then we can, or we can do in a conversation style like.
I'm happy to quickly come back on that. Um, I mean, the, um, uh, the response rate is probably lower than we would want right now. I think that we, we, um, we will be revisiting, um, at all of those approaches and, and looking at, at different ways as well. Obviously we, we always welcome, um, members' suggestions of, of, of different ways of, um, of reaching, uh, communities because the, it, it, we don't, you know, we don't want to hide this. This is something that we, we want patients to know about and, uh, we, we want to hear back from them because there's, um, there's absolutely no point us developing, uh, um, you know, a, a good new health centre if it doesn't meet the needs of, uh, of the people that we're serving. So we absolutely want to hear from people, so.
Can I just chip in on that? One of the, the points we've, we've heard, um, from the practice, they're very, very keen on, on this and have been very active and supportive of, of developing proposals, uh, very quickly. Is, it is very difficult to get patients to engage with something that they want, to, to give a formal opinion on that. And, you know, people are more motivated to say if they don't like something, but I absolutely take the challenge and we'll do all we can.
I think just, sorry, and just one more thing as well is that, um, we've, we've actually worked with Primary Care Sheffield, who are the provider of these two practices, um, previously on, uh, on consultations and, um, they, they, they take it very seriously, engaging with, um, with their patients. And, um, we've had some very successful consultations in, in kind of very similar sort of short kind of distance relocations. So, um, we are hopeful that, that we'll, um, we'll, we'll kind of reach a lot of people.
Thank you. And this is just suggestions for the consultation. When I've previously done consultations, I've found it easier to have a buffer of organisations that are already interacting with the people you would want to speak to. So just to clarify, have you spoken to Changing Chef, um, Kinka or Shaw, Shaw and Tara? Any Tara's have you spoken to around? So yeah, these are just suggestions and we have contacts that we could probably send over to you. Feel like that would be useful because they interact with them day to day, probably extended hours than any other normal consultation could do. I know you mentioned City of Sanctuary was consulted. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and sorry, just to come back, um, so the, the Tara's were definitely part of our, um, previous one. We, we've not contacted Tara's yet and we would, we would definitely welcome, um, the contacts for those. In terms of City Centre, we, we, um, by proxy, uh, we've been, um, working with Spring, um, who obviously City of Sanctuary are, are a part of that. So we have, we have made contact with them and we're looking at ways of, of kind of doing that. We would like to do a, a lot of really close work with them around this.
Brilliant. Yeah, I think it'd be important to have an emphasis on City of Sanctuary, um, because of the people that use the services. Yeah, these are two questions I think Martin wants me to pass on. Um, are you confident you have enough time to progress the city proposal? And when will the results of the city consultation come back to the committee? That's number one. And number two is, um, it would be good to have reassurance that the city isn't up against it for funding timescales, given how behind it is only starting consultation.
Yeah, if I, if I can just pick up on the, the, the timescales, the timescale is the timescale. We need to work to that. I've got a very motivated project team. We are moving rapidly on this. In some ways I wish we'd been able to move as quickly as the, the new build helps we have on, on this one in getting to a point of, of, of business cases. The building itself has been more challenging. I'm happy to, you know, see if there's, there's other questions from, from, uh, members, rather than expanding on, on what we've, we've done to date. But, um, there's been a huge amount of work in a very short period of time necessarily to meet those timescales so that we do not lose that funding. We were in a, a, a position where we hadn't been able to identify a building, um, and a suitable scheme. Excuse me, around, um, the, the, the very first part of Mar, of, of April, sorry, end of, end of March into early April, there was a risk that we were going to lose this scheme entirely. I'm pleased to say we are very much within the programme. We have got that funding secured as long as we can deliver on the timeframe. So that's my challenge.
Thank you.
And I think like, one of the points you've made to, made to us before about this is that, that, that while the, that, that the planning needs really careful thought because it's a, it's a revisioning, a refurbishment of an existing building. Actually, once we get onto the development, it should catch up pretty quickly with the other schemes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll say, I was trying to keep the, the focus of, of conversation in terms of, um, the consultation. If members do want to explore the, the building itself and what we, we're doing there, very happy to have those, have those discussions. But absolutely, Abby, yes, yeah, um, with, there's a real opportunity to, to, to move quickly. And, and just your, your final point about when it'll come back to, um, to this committee. So we have a, our plan is that we will have, um, the consultation report, um, by, um, by December of this year. Uh, so it will, uh, I've not, I've not managed to, to kind of plan that with the dates of this committee, but kind of shortly after that, the next available, um, committee, we would definitely be hoping to, to bring that along.
Brilliant. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. And we, I mean, we've said it, we've said it before, you know, keep members involved. Award members and members of this committee, as Mel's just, you know, highlighted, there's sometimes there's local knowledge that we can bring to help roll out a scheme. So, um, yeah, uh, Lucy.
I have picked this up before with you, Richard, but just to sort of follow on from, um, what you shared with me and what's already been spoken about today, the question of, um, asylum seekers and refugees. So I was surprised that it wasn't talked about a little bit more in the paper and particularly in the section about underrepresented groups and how they'll be involved. There's something about acknowledging the very specific set of sort of barriers there, which isn't just around language and ethnicity. This is about people newly arrived to the country that actually don't possibly understand even fully what a GP provision is, or, you know, why they might want to comment on it and what that, um, surgery will function as for them. And I think you're probably going to get that feedback through the Spring connection that you've made. So I'm really pleased to hear that, um, you've, um, been working on that and probably from the surgery themselves because they, Mulberry, know all of these barriers. So I guess it's more of a comment than a question really, which is just that it would be, I can see a sort of small risk here of almost kind of confusion for that group of people in terms of what they're being asked to contribute to. And can we turn that into an opportunity to sort of, um, do work to help that group of people understand what the provision that is being talked about actually is and what it could be? I just, I, I don't know quite what I'm suggesting, but I just feel as though there could be an opportunity there because we've, it's already been recognised, like, you know, I've spoken to the surgery about, um, that need for, for better information for people. They, they think there's better, uh, you know, information needed through sort of routes such as MERS and other, other avenues. So yeah, it's just something about can we use this to, to work on that really.
Yeah, I, I think you made a very good point, Lucy. Um, we are very much aware that, that, that this is a, that, that this is a group of people who, who obviously have, uh, very particular needs and also very particular concerns. And, and as you say, some of that may be about not understanding how healthcare operates or why this would be important to them, but also potentially a reluctance to share open views with people in perceived positions of authority because of their previous experience elsewhere. So we are really aware that that's, you, you, you know, one of the barriers we face in, in, in seeking views. Also, the, the nature of Mulberry in that patients only remain with Mulberry largely for the period of time where they are asylum seekers, once they receive leave to remain, or that's right. That they're, that they are then supported to move on to other practices. So the population is not, is relatively transient. Um, so, so that's also another difficulty because it's nobody's long term, it's nobody's long term practice. Some people may unfortunately be there longer than you'd like, but, um, but that, that's another issue. So, but yes, we are aware of some of those issues. Because we do have similar issues in terms of encouraging people to register with Mulberry in the first place. Understanding that that's a good thing to do, even if they don't feel they have any, any immediate house needs. So we, we're very keen to look at how we, how we get information to that, to, to those people. And you're right, I think there's a, an opportunity to combine the two that we will. It's, it's definitely worth exploring. Anything you want to add?
No, no, brilliant suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks very much indeed. I think, um, was there any other questions specific to the city centre? I'm keen that we can move on to the other agenda item, um, fairly quickly. Is it a quick one?
Just, uh, clarify, you know, Mulberry Street and the city's, uh, GPC, which one is, is it the Broadline or is it? I, I'm not sure which one.
It's currently in Central, Central Clinic, um, which is, uh, opposite, near the crucible. There's two practices within the same building in Central Clinic. The building's currently owned by Sheffield Teaching Hospitals and they operate in, um, on across a number of floors within that.
So they are just in the same building?
They're two, three hundred metres away. Yeah, correct. They're, sorry, they're, sorry, they're in the same, they're in the same building currently. And they will move two, three hundred metres into the, into the new building.
In Church Street, the corner of, yeah. I, i- is there any provision for the, you know, parking for disabled? I mean, if it's anybody travelling, uh, uh, because there is in a way for short stay, but around this end there isn't. Have you looked at that?
Beyond the provision that there is currently around the cathedral, Couplers Hall, et cetera, the, and obviously it's on a tram route, which makes it quite difficult as well. We haven't done any particular, uh, additions to that. I think that's the kind of thing that would come out through the, the planning application engagement, planning officers. We're very limited in, in city centre locations generally. Practices in city centres rarely have any parking, uh, at all, um, is, is the case. And there isn't any parking, uh, appropriate for this building or for, for their current premises.
Okay, um, I, I have more questions, but we, I, I think we need to move on to our other agenda item. One thing very interested in with the development of all of these, including the refurbishing, the Church Street building, is the, um, cut the net zero, uh, target and how that's being met. I don't think we've got time to go into that today, but, I think, um, it would be good to follow up on that sooner rather than later. That's obviously great interest to us as a, as a council, as we have, um, commitments to that, that we need to meet and, and should meet. So I think we, we may have a slight issue of timing with you coming back with a consultation report because we don't have a meeting in December. And our next one is late January. So, uh, you might want to just correspond with us about how we can work that out and whether we need to, uh, possibly slot in an, an informal workshop just to talk through the consultation report with you. Would that be acceptable to members if we do it that way rather than delay anything unnecessarily? Okay. So thanks ever so much for your time. It's been, um, it's been extremely good to hear that there's progress on the city centre. It was worrying that we might lose it. Um, so that really is good news and, um, good luck with the next stage.
Thank you very much.
Just while our next guest come in, um, just for members, we were asked to note on that last item, the plans that, uh, the South Yorkshire Integrative Headboard has put in place to continue involving local people in the development of the three new health centres already approved. And to note the consultation underway on the proposal to develop, develop a city centre, health centre and relocate PCS City and PCS Mulberry practices to the new site. So just to be clear, we, we were asked to note those two items and we've, we've done so. Great. Welcome to our next guest and we're going to hear about maternity services improvement update. And I think the last time we heard from you was in 2022. So welcome back and then we're looking forward to hearing your update. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and then just go into your presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, uh, my name's Chris Morley. Uh, I'm chief nurse at Sheffield Teaching Hospitals. So I'll just introduce my colleagues, Angie first.
Hi, I'm Angie Legg. I'm the Quality Director. Morning, everybody. I'm Laura Rumsey and I'm the Midwifery Director.
So thank you very much, uh, for inviting us back. I, I looked and it was actually a year, um, tomorrow that we were here last. So really pleased to be able to come back and to give you an update and to highlight some of the progress that we think we've made, uh, in the, um, subsequent year. So, so I'll first move on a slide. Thank you very much. So when we came last year, um, we had had the CQC visitors, um, in, um, 2021 and they had rated maternity services as follows. So you can see there's five domains and they had said for three of the domains, um, they were inadequate and for the other two, they said they required improvement. So little did I know when I sat here last year that the CQC would be back in the building within the month and they came back late September 2022. And on their rerating, I'm pleased to say they increased, um, all our, our ratings bar one, which stayed the same as requires improvement and gave us an overall rating of requires improvement. But with a, a very, um, encouraging commentary about, um, the progress that had been made and, and indeed how, how close we were in some of those domains to, to good. So, uh, to go to the next slide please. So one of the questions you asked last year when we were here and alongside me on that day, I had Laura then, and I also had Andrea Galamberti, who's our, um, clinical director in that photo. But at the time they were both interim and the question you asked was, there seems to be a lot of interims in this post, you know, how are you changing that? And I'm really pleased now that both Andrea and, um, Laura have been appointed substantively alongside Sue, who was already in post as the operations director. And that leadership team really has, um, enabled us to drive forward from what, when they came in as, as interims and through over the last year. And we have made a, a number of significant improvements, which we'll describe in the presentation in the next, um, few minutes. In addition, there were some other roles in there which are key. Um, so, um, we've invested in particular areas. So fetal surveillance, that is about the wellbeing of babies, uh, before they're born and making sure we know what's happening. So we've got, um, an expert role to oversee training, development, practice development in that area. Cultural safety midwark, that's very much about making sure that we're looking closely at, um, inequalities and trying to address those. at inequalities and trying to address those particularly for our diverse population and a lot on education and development, really important part of our journey. So thanks for going to the next slide. So the approach we've taken was to look at the five domains of the CQC, so well led at the top, safe effective caring at the bottom, and then to have some specific work streams led through what we call our maternity improvement programme. And there on on things like governance, which is making sure that we have good policies, we've got, we understand what our risks are, we manage incidents well, quality and safety, so looking at how we address particular issues. I've talked about fetal monitoring as one, but but others as well, and how we have oversight of what happens with our women and babies. Leadership and culture runs through everything and we've talked about the leadership team, workforce and staffing, and that's a key key aspect obviously of any service and we'll talk more about about where we are with that. And then partnership engagement, how we work with our communities and we will talk more about the maternity and neonatal voices partnership, which is a key aspect of our work. So that was the overall improvement approach. And the next slide, you'll see that we translated that into the improvement programme. So under each of those headings, there are some specific areas that we wanted to focus on. And what we've done is very much prioritised, so we haven't addressed all of those at once. Some of those things still require addressing, but some of them were felt to be more urgent than others and we really focused on tackling some particular issues and taking them rooms forwards. And so one example would be how we assess women as they come into the service, potentially in labour or with other issues. And again, Laura will describe that in a moment. So I think we're now going to drill down into those headings a bit more and I'll hand over to Laura. Thanks, Laura.
Morning again, everybody. So the next slide, that's great, talks about our three phases of investment to the environment at the Jessup Wing. So phase one, which is now complete, involves the entrance and level one to the Jessup Wing, which we worked with with our maternity voice partnership and co-produced what colours we would use, what families would like, what what they felt was missing, what we felt was missing to sort of come to a collaborative decision about what was required. And then also our maternity assessment centre, or otherwise known as MAC. So this is where we, this is, if you like, maternity services emergency department. So this is where all our women come through needing immediate care and attention. And this is where we've improved our environment where women can be assessed using a standardised approach, which I'll talk about later, and is working incredibly well. So there are phase two and phase three to come and they are due to start next week. And this is the, some additional work in the maternity assessment unit where the entrance and reception is and the waiting areas. So we needed to make sure, obviously, and CQC identified that we needed to have oversight of all women that were coming into the area and that were waiting to be assessed. So that work will be, is starting and is due to finish in April. And phase three is at some additional clinical rooms in maternity assessment centre and upgrade of the existing footprint. So we're really excited about this piece of work and we're going to do a launch in April, May time, that we think the whole community and our service users will be really happy about. Next slide, please. So the next three, yeah, I don't know whether you can see there. So the first slide actually looks about, looks at level one and the improvements that have been made there. So we've got the main entrance, so we've got some additional seating as well, the floors have been upgraded and changed. We've got additional signage, much better signage and colour coordinated doors so that families, women and families, but also, you know, we've run gynecology services as well and we need to make sure that our women know where to go. So also at our, as well as the signage, we have a volunteer in the entrance that will direct patients and women and families to where they need to go. I took the top right picture is, I don't know, I really like that, it's it's got trees on it, so and we're on tree root walk, so that might just be me that likes that, but I think that looks really nice. And then you can see the lift area and obviously we've had upgraded facilities, toilets, changing rooms and feedback from families and patients using the environment is is really positive. Next slide, please. So this is the maternity assessment centre and this piece of work is is complete now through phase one and we can see the new signage on there, there's new flooring, this this has been a complete new build into a courtyard area. So we've been able to look at what was actually required to deliver the best standards of care, taking into account what women and families said, what what staff felt. And it's been a really true collaborative approach and you can probably see from the, even the colour coordination and everything, this is the first phase of three really that is really going to be grateful our community of women and families using our services. Next slide, please. So this is talking about workforce. So one of the things that we noticed was that as we started undertaking the improvement work and working as a system within the local maternity and neonatal system, midwives who had worked with us in the past started returning. And these are just little teeny weeny comments, vignettes of four senior midwives who returned to us over the last 12 months. I'll let you read them. I don't particularly want to read them out, but lots of the staff are very pleased with the changes that they feel in terms of not only the environment, but also increasing visibility of leadership teams, also the additional roles and the investment in the infrastructure. Next slide, please. So these are our, these are some of our plans over the next six months. So we have 24 early career midwives, so these are newly qualified midwives starting with us in October. And in addition to that, we have three internationally educated midwives who are due to start with us around the same time. We've utilised the national steer about using, or capitalising actually, the use of registered nurses in our postnatal areas. So registered nurses work under the supervision of registered midwives in the postnatal areas to provide additional support in terms of being an NMC registrant. And that has worked very well, particularly our internationally educated nurses who have experience of working in maternity services abroad have definitely been a really great additional addition to our workforce. We have NHS England funded a, what I would term as the conversion course, actually it's not now, it's an RN to RM registered nurse, registered midwife 20 month course that's where individuals come out with a masters in midwifery. And this is fully funded by NHS England. So we sent seven RNs who were already working within the trust on the course last, this March. And we are interviewing in the next three months for, to send another cohort in March 24. So I would like to send at least 10. There was a lot of interest last year and I think there'll be even more this year. And it's a really great opportunity as you may or may not know that Sheffield hasn't run an RN to RM shortened course for midwifery for many years. So lots of registered nurses who would be interested in doing the course and being paid a salary at the same time. I think this is a really great opportunity, so we're going to capitalise that on on that as well. As a trust, we've sent three students on a midwifery degree apprenticeship course. So Huddersfield are the nearest university that do the midwifery degree apprenticeship course. I am well known for nagging our Sheffield universities to put this on and they will be, and I won't stop nagging them, but ultimately this is quite an expensive way to train. But as a trust, we're committed to actually training our, particularly our maternity support workers who are paid at band three whilst they're doing their training for 40 months. Because these are the, these are the individuals who, you know, who are going to stay, they're loyal to the trust and they appreciate being funded through the course. And we know, all the evidence suggests that if you grow your own, they'll stay. It also supports the equity and equality and the, you know, the diversity of the workforce. You know, there's many, many people and I would have been one of them in my, in my twenties as a single parent, I wouldn't have been able to take three years off to go to university and that would have cost a lot of money and that would have not be available to me. So we want people, women, to be cared for by women, individuals who look like them. That's what women tell us. So this will give the opportunity for people, you know, mature students, people from diverse backgrounds, take full advantage. So I'm all for this. At the moment, these midwifery degree apprenticeships aren't funded by central government. So this is something that actually, there was a roundtable meeting this week discussing that and where that money should come from, because I think this is part of the jigsaw for the future for the workforce. We also have 10 maternity support worker apprenticeships, apprentices who graduate in in January. So they actually are at Sheffield College and these potentially could be our midwife apprentices, degree apprentices, apprentices of the future, and that's what I'd like to see. Next slide, please. So this is just a really quick snapshot, but I do think it tells a story. And this was, the top slide is July 22 and the bottom slide is January 23. And you can see in July 22, we were sort of in the upper quartile of retention. So we could see that we were still losing our our midwives. So what we know is that midwives have a demographic where many of them are over 55, they can retire, we know this. But it's tempting these these experienced midwives back into the organisation to support all of our newly qualified, that's that's where it's at really. So and also retaining all our newly qualified midwives. So we were very lucky last year to retain all but one of our newly qualified midwives and the one that we lost was relocated to London or down south, to to somewhere that was, you know, and that was, that was nothing to do with working in the trust. So we have lots and many, many different opportunities for our newly qualified midwives to be well supported in their preceptship, which takes about a year. So we have a pastoral support midwife. We also, obviously, we've invested heavily in our education and training as well. So I do think this, I know it's a snapshot, but I, this is something that we've maintained, we've retained all of our newly qualified bar one, but also there are people coming back into the organisation, into the service. And then also we're attracting people from other trusts back in. So I think that's a good news story. It feels good. Next slide, please. So this slide discusses some of our quality improvements and I did say earlier about how we've implemented something called BSOTS, which is a standardised approach of assessing all women when they enter the maternity assessment centre. So this is Birmingham specific obstetric triage system. The CQC are very, very interested in the way women are risk assessed when they come in. And this is a nationally supported tool and way of working and systemised approach of providing safe care and using a traffic light system to assess our women. Now, we implemented that, in fact, yesterday or the day before was our year anniversary. And we've moved forward with some of our, about our assessments within 15 minutes. So we started off, the assessments were approximately around 35 to 38 minutes, where many, many of our women waited that amount of time before they were seen. Now, over 90%, it might be more than 90%, but definitely over 90% of our women are seen within 15 minutes, sometimes later, sometimes sooner than that. And that's not because we've seen less women, so we monitor this and audit this weekly and monthly and this goes into our governance, our governance meetings to ensure that we're providing responsive care to women. In Jan, in January 2023, our consultant colleagues launched the consultant of the week initiative, which has worked incredibly well, I must say. So this involves a consultant being allocated mainly to the antenatal ward, but it isn't actually just there, but Monday to Friday between eight and five or eight and six. And this allows women, particularly if they're waiting for induction of labour, to have a daily review by the same person. So a senior person that can risk assess every induction of labour, whether there's a delay, whether there's not a delay, answer questions, it provides continuity for families as well. This also allows any woman that, any postnatal woman that becomes unwell, for them to be seen as well by an obstetric consultant, so they're not waiting. So just to provide a bit of clarity, what we did used to have previously was obviously the consultant and team that was allocated for the labour ward. So this consultant of the week is in addition to that. So that allows the consultant and the team working on the labour suite and doing emergency work as well to be able to focus on that. But also for women who are waiting for everything that I'm talking about here, the consultant of the week address, to have responsive care and have their questions answered and not be waiting to be seen in between any sort of emergency situation. Women who are also pregnant or have had had their baby with it that are in any other area of the trust would also be seen by the consultant of the week as well. And all our induction of labours, any are assessed, risk assessed a minimum of twice a day. And that has definitely been a really, a really great step forward in terms of complaints, in terms of women feeding, families feeding back that they're not getting the answers that they require. The complaints have definitely significantly reduced. And just actually talking about BSOTS as well, complaints for maternity assessment unit that used to be known as triage have really bottomed out as well. So I think that that's, that's great and women and families are happy. Next slide, please. So this is another bit of quality improvement work about postpartum hemorrhage and that's bleeding after you have babies, after a woman has a baby or something called a massive obstetric hemorrhage, which is an additional blood loss. And this looks at how we've, how we've used the Delp mnemonic, is that the right word? Yeah. To to ensure that every woman is assessed for their risk of postpartum hemorrhage, given what they tell us, what their medical history might be, whether they may have experienced that in the past. And you can just sort of see where we introduced it and how it's continuing to reduce. And this is a piece of work that we won't ever stop doing, this is something that has to happen all the time. But often, as most things, you know, when a piece of work is being focused on, you will get some improvements in outcome, but this is something that we won't be changing. And it's just an example of some of the many quality improvements that we undertake. Next slide, please. Okay, so this shows us about our compliance with our fresh eyes assessments in labour. So by fresh eyes, I mean, so women who are, have their baby's heartbeat monitored using a cardiotocograph, they should have something called a fresh eyes assessment. And that is a new person coming in and going through the last hour's assessment and agreeing with the the criteria, whether it's, looks like a normal assessment, whether it needs any escalation. So we undertake a weekly and monthly audit of fresh eyes assessments. And this is, this is something that has definitely improved and reduced some of our and reduced some of our babies going to the neonatal unit. And our new foetal surveillance matron Catherine Hopley, you'll see a picture of her in a later slide. She has absolutely undertaken hours and hours with the training, both face to face but also in the clinical areas about CTG monitoring and baby's heartbeats. Because we know, and this is up and down the country, that misinterpretation of fetal heart rates can lead to poor outcomes. So the education of staff, not just once, but every year, but not even just every year, all the time. So having somebody there reviewing your trace so that you don't get blind to any changes is incredibly important for quality. So our fresh eyes approach, it needs to be assessed all the way through the labour. So it's not just looking at, was this done right once? It has to be done right every hour. And there is a, an assessment sticker every hour. And so that's what the assessment looks like. So our compliance, our audit compliance is getting better and better. And obviously over ninety percent, which we're really pleased with. And there have been positive changes to outcomes for babies and mothers. Next slide please. So this is something else. And this is Tommy's Clinical Decision Tool. And this allows tailored, personalised decision-making for every women, every woman, sorry, based on her past pregnancy, what she's, how she's feeling at the moment. This is a national tool and it started off as a research project with one of the, St George's, one of the London hospitals. And this has grown and grown and grown. And it's now accepted by the, by NHS Resolution and Saving Babies Lives, version three. So there's just been an upgrade in this so that we can actually interrogate the system and make sure that at every point we have risk assessed and discussed with mothers what is going on with them, have we looked at reduced fetal movements, has anything changed? And so this allows us really to just continue to have conversations with families and mothers.
Sorry Laura, just on that, the all women and some women lines that I showed there, I don't quite understand.
So I'm afraid I can't quite see that.
So what that illustrates is at certain points during the pregnancy, all women, so all women will have a scan at, I've come in twelve, thirteen weeks. All women will. For some women though, when they go later into their pregnancy, there is a need for increased monitoring and scanning. So the, some women will get enhanced scanning. And that's based on a personalised, the algorithm behind it works that through and it continues to update it. The other thing about this is it's visible both to the midwives and the maternity staff, but also the women themselves. And it links to all sorts of information. So it explains why you might need enhanced scanning and why you may, what you should be looking for, monitoring whether your baby's moving enough and those kind of things. So it's really, really helpful.
So it's based on the information that women talk to us about at book, at early doors. But also we know that sometimes that information can change. So that's why it's all women will have the first two offers, but only some women will require the last three, based on what they tell us. Yeah. Right, okay, I'm just going to hand over to my colleague Angie.
Thank you. So obviously, the safety of women in Sheffield is the most important to us. But bringing it back slightly to the CQC. The measures we've put in place were instrumental in the movement from inadequate to requires improvement. And you can see some of those, particularly the BSOTS and DLP. DLP was in place, BSOTS had only just started when the CQC came in. And obviously it's requires improvement because the CQC wanted to see it embedded, the improvements embedded and us to continue to take that forward. And Laura's been describing the methods that we've done since then in the Consultant of the Week, the Tommy's app. We communicate this regularly to all our staffs through safety huddles. And there's also a really good oversight measurement. And it's all of these things combined that lead us to be quite confident we have embedded, we are continuing, we are driving forward because we really believe that we can take this into the good realm. So if you go on to the next slide please. This describes some of the oversight mechanisms we have. There is a non-executive and an executive maternity champion. We have a maternity improvement board chaired by the chief executive to monitor the progress and the improvements. There's an oversight and assurance panel, which is the triumvirate and leadership in maternity that obviously monitor, but also things like the mortality reviews, patient safety review meeting. So there's a very clear assurance process of looking at things that goes all the way up to the board to make sure that we are being safe. So if we go on to the next slide please. And this was very much recognised by the CQC and we were really pleased about that. So there's a quote from the twenty-twenty-one report, which talked about training. And obviously making sure, as Laura's articulated, making sure that we train, we train regularly. It's part of everyday conversations as well. It's vitally important to safety. And we were really pleased that in the last report, the comment was far more favourable in terms of the mandatory training being met. We are not resting on our laurels, we are continuing to drive this. And Laura will go on to talk about that a bit more in the next few slides.
Great. So these are only a snapshot of some of our training opportunities. And our foetal monitoring training from, from December twenty-two is now a whole day foetal monitoring training undertaken by our major foetal surveillance. But also we have a lead consultant also, Carly Marks, who, who leads on this as well. And this is very much underpinned by latest evidence about working collaboratively within the system with national bodies, also taking into account NICE guidance as well. So this has been, this training, this whole day training has been received very favourably by staff. And we've definitely seen a reduction in CTG interpretation. So I think that's, that's greatly positive. So the next one is our called prompt, but it's a practical obstetric multi-professional training for emergency drills. So this is also a whole day multi-professional training, which includes obviously obstetricians, anaesthetists, neonatal nurses, midwives, maternity support workers and work together, train together, learn together. And we know that this works for us. So we also have live simulations in clinical areas, which are really important. So we had a live simulation, for example, in a baby abduction. And that was really powerful. And the action plan that came out of that really sort of identified some of our areas that we could improve on. And actually, that baby, it was a doll, but that baby didn't get off the labour ward. But because we didn't want to stop the drill, we did continue with it. But, but that's how people learn, don't they? I mean, I definitely do. So the live simulations are very, very important. And also our neonatal newborn life support training as well, ensuring that all our midwives, both in community and working on the labour ward and our medical staff are trained adequately. So our compliance with training is very close to ninety percent now, which we're very proud of. And actually, we are, I think we are just the highest trust for training in our system. So I think that particularly given some of the challenges that we face, this is a real achievement for us. Next slide please. All right. So this is Catherine Hopley there, top right. And this is how she engages staff in all areas. This isn't just labour suite, this is actually on the wards, in antenatal clinic, in antenatal daycare. So you probably can't see this, but actually, one of the other midwives had made a cake with, actually, that had a transfer of a CTG on it, which was really great. And it's surprising what people will stop and do for cake and tea. And we shouldn't be surprised really, should we? But Catherine is absolutely passionate about this. She speaks nationally, she writes articles in the HSJ, teaches on Baby Lifeline. We're very, very fortunate to get somebody of her calibre working with us. And she does lots of live training. So you can see the bottom left, that is actually on the labour suite. And they are, there are midwives there, obstetricians, anaesthetists, neonatal consultants, all having sort of on-the-spot discussion, professional discussions about foetal surveillance. So it's very exciting. And staff feedback that they feel very stimulated and supported in the clinical area. So we have something called the safety message of the week. So this is something that we have from, when we look at our, our incidents, moderate and above. If we can see any immediate learning that needs to be actually communicated immediately to the shop floor, that's how that comes down. It's communicated in our ward safety huddle. So in every clinical area, we have huddles. And this includes in community where immediate information goes out to the shop floor, which is really good for them and for patient safety. We have a patient safety review newsletter that comes out weekly. The Healthcare Safety Investigation Bureau do a quali-, do a sort of quarterly newsletter. So Healthcare Safety Investigation Bureau investigate maternity incidents that reach a certain criteria. And they produce quarterly newsletters, actually distilling all the main learning. So we share that out to staff. We have a closed Facebook page, well, group, where the whole of the multidisciplinary team are on there. And so immediate learning comes out on there, comes out on email, huddles, ward meetings. I mean, it has to be a scattergun approach because not one size fits all. But staff report that they do feel well informed and involved. Oh yes, learning notice boards. I think I've said everything on there. Next slide please. So these are some of our learning forums. And we've recently had a really great sort of quality improvement conference, which fed back really well. Our mortality meetings on the left and our, I must need some new glasses. And our maternity learning forum, which is actually undertaken within the LMNS. And you can see the bottom right too, this is what we had at Christmas. And it looks at Christmas lights and how they, how those patterns of Christmas lights could be learning opportunities for foetal surveillance. So it's kind of a, it's kind of jokey, but it, it does help with learning. It's very visual and it means things to professionals. Next slide please. So these are some of the ways we listen to our staff. Firstly, you know, we always promote high visibility in clinical areas for all staff. I have an open door policy, as does my head of midwifery and deputy head of midwifery, the matrons. We want to be visible, not only for staff, but for families and women as well. We have something called a triumvirate pledge, which we have on our doors, which talks about what we will, what we promise to do for our staff. And staff quite like that, that's been fed. We undertake human factors training within our prompt skills and drills. And that's really important because wherever you've got an incident, you've got some level of human factors. Because wherever you've got humans, you've got fallibility. And that is the science of patient safety. We had a really great what matters to you for staff. So staff came and told us what mattered to them. And some of it was really interesting, well, all of it was really interesting. But, you know, what matters to individuals, sometimes you, you'd never really think about that really. And yeah, most of it was about being heard, being listened to. And, and that was really, that was really great, you know, to know that staff feel able to speak up. So we have our freedom to speak up guardians and champions. We also have our professional midwifery advocates who have clinics within the unit as well. We've got our maternity safety champions who have, every other month, who have a clinic and a walk around the maternity area. You know, and the questions that are asked are very direct. Do you feel, do you feel the service is safe? It has to be that way, it has to be that clear. You know, and staff more often than not would speak up. And we've got our monthly director briefing and feedback, which we have, which we have in a hybrid way. And it has a mentimeter feedback at the end and that's usually pretty good. You know, we talk about not only where we are with the maternity improvement plan, we talk about who we've appointed, who's left, who's coming, what we're doing next, you know. And staff really appreciate being on the front foot with information. So we've got also the perinatal culture leadership score survey. So we've just participated in that and we're awaiting our results to share with our staff. And we're looking forward to that as well. Next slide please.
Just going to encourage you just to move a little bit quicker Laura, just so we don't run out of time for questions. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, so the next slide is about our proud behaviours and values for patients, visitors and staff that apply consistent messages to staff about behaviours. Next slide please. And this is just some of the snapshot really about last year's staff survey. We know that this year's is on, are on its way. But these are some of our early signs of improvement. But this is something that we, we hope that will continue with twenty-twenty-three's staff survey feedback. Next slide please. So what do women and families tell us? So I think our friends and family test, this is our picture for the last, ooh, I think it's a couple of years, isn't it? So we can see really that since April twenty-two, that we've had consistently improved feedback from the friends and family test from our women and families. And that's something we want to build on and capitalise on. And the feedback actually from using friends and family is very, very valuable. Most families will add something, some narrative to support as well. Next slide please. So these next two slides are how we really, really enjoy working with our communities and our, with our maternity voice partnership. So this was the, the Ishrak Centre. Chris and I and quite a few of the midwifery team went down to speak with our, with the women and communities at the Ishrak Centre. And it was, we had a fantastic afternoon, we got fed really well. It was just wonderful really. And we listened to feedback about things like interpreting services. You know, we really, really want to do more. And we are feeding into how we can look at interpreting services for our families and using our services. Next one please. And this is just an example of how we all went down to the, this was in Darnall for the, yes, for the Ifta, which was lovely. Again, got fed really well, so that was just fabulous. But it was just great meeting everybody and being involved in the celebrations and hearing feedback from communities. Next slide please. Nearly there. So reducing health inequalities is a, is a huge, huge focus for us. And we work very, very hard looking at reducing health inequalities. So one of our new roles is the cultural safety midwife. So what we look at are national reports, where we know that women who are non-mite British or black and brown are more likely to sustain harm and as are their babies. And why is that? You know, what are we doing? What are we not hearing? How do we, how do we promote equality and equity in our services? What we need to do more of? So all of these, all of these national reports, we've benchmarked our services against. And we have a lot of work to do, but we're really looking at our workforce, making it more equitable, making it more diverse. And ensuring that women of all, of all communities have their voices heard. And that includes our staff as well, the workforce race equality standard. The feedback from the latest survey is incredibly important to us about making sure that people from black, Asian ethnic minority backgrounds have the same opportunities as their white colleagues. And also involving our Sheffield maternity voices partnership as well. We've got a really great diverse leadership team there as well that we want to work with and hear from. Right, I'll hand over to the boss.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think we've covered most of that. So next slide please. So we haven't been reassessed and I'm not expecting this. So we haven't been reassessed and I'm not expecting to see you see in the next month. But this is where we self-assess that we think we would be. We think we've made further improvements, particularly in the well-led and effective domains. We do still think there's work to do on responsive and safe. I think some of those changes will come with.
So could you just put your microphone on? Sorry.
My apologies. The areas we've really focused on our leadership. You've heard about the environment, training and learning, workforce recruitment and retention. That's further work to do. And we do think we've seen better outcomes for women and families, better experience and indeed better feedback from our staff about how they find it to work within the unit. So thank you very much for bearing with us quite a lot to cover and more if we'd have had time and very happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you ever so much. That's a lot of information. Thanks. I'm going to just kick off very quickly about with a couple of questions myself and then we'll go around. I just, I looked back to the CQC inspection of 2020 and the 2021 visit. And it is, you know, it's quite, it's upsetting to look back to where, to the starting point. But I think, I do think it's important to put what you're saying today in context, that it was, you know, it did sound quite bleak from the CQC report, you know, service didn't have enough medical staff with the right qualifications, skills and experience to keep women and babies safe from avoidable harm and provide the right care. wording like that was really quite upsetting and very unsafe staffing levels on labour ward. So I wanted to just follow up a little bit on staffing and I'm sure we've seen tables before where you've demonstrated the staffing levels on wards and quite a lot of that seemed to rely on registered nurses. And you've explained a bit more about that today. But is that the ideal for you to, to have that reliance of registered nurses? In an ideal world, would you have more qualified midwives? Or are you happy with how that balance of the workforce works? And also just how, the workforce improvements that you've made, how can they be made secure and permanent? And what lessons have been learned from what wasn't right before and where you've got to now? And so how can, how can you get that sustainability of the workforce?
Okay. So I'll start with the first part of the question, which is about registered nurses. So we, we don't rely on registered nurses to provide midwifery care. That is an unsafe model and it isn't what Birthrate Plus, who is the, who are the only nice workforce tool for maternity services recommend? What we know from our recent Birthrate Plus assessment, which was last year, is that we can complement our services with registered nurses. Now, they can be no more than 10%. So registered midwives and registered nurses provide very different roles. And registered nurses can enhance maternity care, but only in the postnatal area. And that is the only place that they are, except the Advanced Obstetric Care Unit, which is a level two, high level enhanced care offer, which is sort of the intermediary before going to intensive care. So registered nurses with intensive care qualifications can deliver care under the supervision of a midwife, according to Birthrate Plus. Postnatal care, which is obviously on the postnatal wards, can only be delivered by midwives, but nurses in a 10% support role. Now, that might sound really complex and it probably is, but this is my bread and butter. So we don't have a huge number of nurses providing maternity care that's not supervised. We have a very safe model of care. We also have an enhancement for, we know we have a vacancy and we're doing lots and lots of work to entice people back and also newly qualified. But the main thing about maternity services is, and all services, is about retention. You've got to keep them. So you could, you know, it can be the leaky bucket. You can get as many people as you want in, but if you can't retain them, if you don't make it a nice place to work, a positive place, a safe place to work, you won't keep them. So we don't have, just to be clear, we don't have wards full of registered nurses. We have one registered nurse on the postnatal areas on every shift. But in addition to that, we have three and four registered midwives plus support staff. Just want to be clear about that. The second point, I can't remember what it was.
So I think it was sustainability. So this is going to be more challenging. So I think the, there is a recognised national shortage at the moment of midwives. So we are fishing in a pond, which has not got many fish in to labour the analogy. So that's why some of the initiatives that Laura's described were taken forward. So registered nurses becoming midwives and looking at apprenticeship models. The good news is this year, the recruitment into the universities for midwives is good and at the level. So that's our main pipeline of new midwives. And that seems quite secure, but we probably need more. The long-term plan that was recently announced would say we would train more. So hopefully we can start doing that for next year. So we've got a tool that helps us look at what the longer term might look like. So we can start thinking about other actions we might need to take. We have done some international recruitment of midwives. It's not quite the same as international recruitment of nurses, because the model of midwifery in other countries is very different to it, to the model in this country. So it is undoubtedly a challenge. Retention is important, but the other thing about retention, however well we retain people, everyone leaves at some point. And we know that some of the staff in midwifery services are pushing towards the older end of our workforce and we will therefore naturally lose people to retirement. So something we're keeping high level of visibility on and we're working with others on.
Sophie, did I see your hand first? Steve and Talib and Laura?
Yeah, my question neatly follows on from that. You said earlier on that you've tried and tried with the university. It quite surprises me that actually the universities don't actually put on those, as you say, from RN to RM. And people have to go to West Yorkshire, to Huddersfield, as you say. And why is that? Why is that an issue?
So the university, Sheffield Hall University does do the RN to RM. What they don't do is the midwifery degree apprenticeship. So this is the 40-month course of, for example, our maternity support workers, where they're paid all the way through their training. So it's, they won't have been nurses before. So it's the actual apprenticeship that we don't have in Sheffield yet.
So I'm not here to speak for the universities, but I guess what they'd say is there needs to be enough demand for that course. So we may be, there needs to be enough demand for that course. So there is one in Huddersfield, but it will need to be filled for them to be able to run it. And it does rely on individual organisations at the moment, being able to fund individuals through that training, which, because while they're training, they cannot provide service. So when I trained as a nurse, I was essentially a nursing auxiliary. So I was part of the numbers and I was paid and I was being trained. We don't do that anymore. People in training are super new, they're just learning. So it means that if you're paying them a salary as well, it's quite expensive. So the universities would need enough people to do that. It is part of the long-term workforce plan. So I am hoping that more of that will be facilitated by funding from central government to help us with those salary costs, which I don't think we'd be able to meet as a trust. It's not what we receive our money for. Our money's for delivering patient care. Thank you.
Presumably that scenario would be different if the bursaries were brought back.
Bursaries are part of it. Bursaries were never, they were a good contribution towards a wage, but there is a grant now that's given to health workers, but even that we're finding isn't enough to entice lots of people back. So I think, as Laura's described, it's often those people who've gone off and had a good chunk of life and then need to come back and they've got a certain income. The grants that we have at the moment, which are pretty good, if I suppose if you're leading school aren't supporting that. So there is, there is akin to, we're not allowed to call it the bursary anymore, but there is a grant for that, which is similar, but it's not quite enough.
Council McLane.
Thanks. Thank you. I've just got a couple more questions on staffing and then also on complaints. You say it's really encouraging to see what you're saying about retaining staff and I can see how important that is. I just wondered in terms of your vacancy levels, where are you now compared to 2022? Like, is it getting better or, you know, what sort of percentage of vacancies do you have?
So our vacancy position is quite interesting because we've had to actually move the goalposts in certain respects, because we've just had our Birthrate Plus assessment. And in 2022, before the Birthrate Plus assessment, it would have said our vacancy was X, but that was based on, that was based on the previous assessment. This assessment would say, it's, what we know is that we probably have a vacancy rate of around 50. And, but we have, as we know, we've got 28 newly qualified midwives coming in in October, in addition to attracting other people external to the trust. So I think it's fair to say we've got, you know, all things being equal, this is going to be, this is going to be ongoing. It's going to be about having rolling recruitment, retaining. It's not something, unfortunately, we're going to be able to address really, really quickly. But we do have some very, some very robust plans to continue recruiting. And as Chris described, we're all fishing in the same pond. So we need to be the, we need to be the trust of choice. And some of the work that we've done this year in terms of investing in senior roles, pastoral support, definitely have attracted more students than we've usually seen.
So would you say your reliance on agency workers has decreased slightly or is that an improving position or?
So we, we use a relatively few number of agency workers. Most of the temporary staffing we use is our own staff working additional shifts. And we put on a, Laura described, we've put on a rate, a special rate for them to do that, which has been really helpful and has filled a number of those gaps. I would imagine that once we get the 28 new midwives in and they've had some time to learn the role, we will be able to reduce the amount of incentive we use. But I think we will still use some for a little while longer and we will do that to maintain safety. So that's important. There was a census I've seen just today that we've sent in and clearly we do have more staff this year than we did than last year. So we are seeing a growth. We would like to see it grow quicker. I think it will grow quicker with the 28 that are coming in now. So that will be helpful, but there will still be a gap. I think if we were here this time next year, I think we'd still be talking about vacancies.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of complaints, I noticed in the December 22 CQC report that one of the actions, excuse me, they said that you must take is to ensure that complaints are responded to within timelines outlined in your policy and procedures. So I just wondered how that was going. Also, it's good to see the family and friends uptake that that's improving. But I just wondered how your complaints rates are, whether you've seen more complaints or have been more complaints more easily resolved, how that's going.
Thank you. So yeah, that was obviously one of our priorities was bringing that rate down and that has now been completed. The response rate is now in line with the rest of the trust and it's meeting the national targets. Do you know, I'm trying to, I know it's at the top.
90%, so 90% of complaints are addressed within the time, at least 90% within the timescale, which is normally 28 days. We do sometimes agree along the timescale if it's particularly complex, but yeah. So we monitor that through the board.
Okay. And are you still seeing the same numbers of complaints coming through compared to 12 months ago or is that?
Do you know, that's, it's a really difficult question because actually we.
Do you want people to come?
We welcome complaints as feedback. So I wouldn't say necessarily a drop was always, whilst we don't want people to be unhappy, we do want them to feed back. So there's a kind of correlation. In a way, I'd almost like people to feed back more and more minor issues and lower the threshold for, you know, contacting us. I don't actually have the detailed figures. We can obviously get them if you want. Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you. councillor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. I think, you know, the improvement of the building is really good. Good to see you. I mean, it's very welcoming. My question is, the staffing, how many staff are, what percentage of BME community in staff? And how many are in leadership team, if there is any?
So this is part of the work that we are actually doing. So to widen midwifery training and allowing, you know, facilitating access to, to the wider community, the more diverse community. That is how we're going to get a more diverse workforce. I can't give you the exact percentages, I'm sorry. There isn't, I'm trying to think, there isn't, there isn't anybody senior in the maternity midwifery team that's of a diverse background. And that's something that we're working towards really hard, because we know that we want to represent the community and women and families want their communities represented and their voices heard.
One of the things we are doing as an organisation is mentoring across protected characteristics to try and encourage people who've, you know, not had the advantages that other people have had, but you know, clearly, you know, they're great staff. So there is a mentoring programme that we link in senior leaders with people to try and help, help them in their careers and grow what is really some fantastic talent we have in the organisation.
Thank you. Any last questions? We've got half a minute left. Are we all happy? Thank you ever so much for your presentation. We really appreciate having the update. Obviously it's been a year. So you've done a lot of work at that time. So good luck as you continue. Thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thanks very much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
So members, what's our action to just, we're just noting the update report, aren't we?
Yeah, there's, there's some complaints figures that we're going to follow up on.
Okay. So we're noting the update report that we've received and requesting some more figures on complaints specifically. Are we happy? Thank you. I'm just going to beg your indulgence to extend the meeting by two minutes just to complete discussion on the work programme. Is that all right? So forthcoming meeting in November, sorry, October, we have an urgent care in Sheffield update. This is partly sparked by the recent CQC inspection of the Walk-in Centre, which is sadly rated inadequate and the work that they've been doing since in improvement. And we've asked for a wider update on the other urgent care services as well in Sheffield as we haven't heard anything about those since, since the proposed move to the Northern General Hospital was abandoned. So that's, that could be quite a big update. If members have anything particularly you'd like to hear through that update, let us know and we can request information. We have the dysphonic and grafted palate speech and language therapy services. You need to be quite fluent to say that, don't you? That's an update coming again after some time. That's been, what, 18 months since we've heard anything about that. So again, that's quite, that's quite an old item and members might want to look back at the previous papers on that and see if there's anything specific you'd like to hear in the update. And then we've got new items on page 70. We have a proposed workshop on dentistry. I'm looking at Lucy because I think you'll be very interested in, in that. We might want some discussion prior to that as to how we might approach the workshop to the best effect. And just to mention that at the Joint Scrutiny Committee, we have RCICB about how dentistry fits into the Joint Forward Plan as they're taking responsibility now for commissioning dentistry. We've got an item on sexual health, which is, it's under public health, but Greg Fell felt that it might be useful for this committee to pay some attention to that as apparently not everything is ideal in that area. So he was quite keen that we scrutinise and delve into that. So that's to be. So that's to be confirmed, I think, which meeting that will fit into. I think, Deborah, yeah?
Not yet, no.
Not yet, yeah. So we'll work that in somewhere. And then investing in health, the idea of that is to have a workshop session with Emma Latimer so that we can understand more what her ambitions and intentions are for Sheffield Place within the joint forward plan. And that will be discussed in a workshop setting. Is there anything, any matters for the work plan?
Thank you. I'm just noting and remembering from the last meeting, I think it's on page 20 of the minutes, there was a couple of workshops that we agreed that aren't in part two. I think it's commissioning priorities and bereavement services. I think the rest of them, I believe, are addressed in the rest of the work programme. Bereavement services workshop that we agreed at the last meeting. I think the rest of them from the last meeting are in, as far as I can tell. Please, someone do correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, I just noted that they, they weren't in.
So I think the commissioning priorities, that's the workshop with Emma Latimer.
Yes, but bereavement services, I don't believe I can.
Can we ensure that that gets, yeah, that that gets inserted? Thank you. Thanks, Sophie, for reminding all that.
Okay, there's also the potential workshop with the city centre primary care hub that has been agreed today as well in December.
We've got the GP workshop still on, haven't we?
Yes, we have, yeah.
Okay, any other business? councillor McCain.
Will the maternity services come back to review on our work plan? Are there 12 months, is that how it works? That'll come back?
Would we like to hear a further report?
Given that they're not, they're still at the quiz improvement, they're not good, whether they should come back?
Want a further report from maternity? We want to wait and see what a further CQC inspection brings up?
Apologies if it's been said it's probably a bit hot in here, so I'm forgetting. Is it, is it the next CQC inspection date around confirmed or like, I mean, obviously.
I don't think that was confirmed. I think, I think Chris was saying they haven't, they don't know when CQC will come, they're not expecting them soon. But it seems, I don't know, it makes sense to me to wait until there's been a further inspection.
That was my question, I guess, will that happen automatically, will it get sort of followed back?
So that's seem reasonable. Yeah, so when there's been another inspection report, then we can ask for some feedback on that. If we, can we note that down just to keep a watch on that for the future? Okay, thank you very much, members, for a very productive meeting again. Thank you and see you in October.